Yumina Chantay Let, Satina Let, 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 Hesit, Turn Guam is back from recess. Good afternoon, colleagues. We're still on Bill number 175-37COR substituted. And Senator Perez, you had the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to proffer another amendment. This one is on line 20, page 16. It's to add a new section to Chapter 4810 GCA. And it would say, "Section," whatever section it is, "a new section 4810," and whatever that section is, "is added to Chapter 4810 GCA to read the section: Reporting of Nitrate Testing Results. All tests of drinking water sources, groundwater and surface water for nitrates shall be posted on the Guam Water Works Authority and the Guam Environmental Protection Agency's website and shall be maintained for a period of not less than 10 years. The tests shall include, but not limited to, tests performed by any agency of the government of Guam, including, but not limited to, GWA and Guam EPA and the Water Environmental Research Institute or WEARI. The report posted shall include, one, the date of the test, the location of the water source, well or river, the quantity of nitrates in the test sample expressed in milligrams per liter. In the event that any test sample reveals nitrate levels that exceed 5 milligrams per liter, GWA will advise customers that are supplied water from the affected source with notices, including with their billings, of the dangers of excess nitrate ingestion, and that nitrate levels may be reduced or eliminated by home filtration systems, including but not limited to ion exchange units, reverse osmosis filters, or distillation units, and to allow legal and clerks to make technical corrections and renumber. So again, I think the importance of this amendment is to make sure the public is aware of the nitrate levels in their drinking water and for them to take action to ensure that the water remains clean and safe, in addition to GWA advising or notifying customers that levels have exceeded regulatory limits. I think this is a critical amendment, and I ask for my colleagues' support. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Tai Tui, you're recognized.
Sisus Masim, Madam Speaker. I stand in full support of this amendment. I think we all know that, and was mentioned several times, that once the milligrams of nitrate come up to five points, then that is already a level which needs to be mitigated. But sometimes this information doesn't get to the public. You find out later on, and already these contaminants have been in the water, and you didn't know about it until you read it in the paper. And sometimes, you know, people who live in areas where they don't have access to Wi-Fi or don't even have, you know, get the newspaper, they don't know about this. I mean, if anything, we should at least let the people know, the customers know, that this is what's happening right now. According to the, if I'm not mistaken, according to the consent decree, that's one of the reasons why, you know, we had to pay $400 million for any type of medication, not just for the nitrate, but also for PFAS contamination. So this, I think, is a very simple bill, and it's definitely to help the public. Even those people who plan on, you know, building the homes, subdividing it into four, those individuals who are in support of this measure, they deserve this information given to them. So I thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to rise in support of this measure.
Sisus Masim, Senator Tai Tui, on the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then the sponsor may close on, oh, Senator Brown on the amendment, Senator Fisher? Yeah, Senator Brown.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of the amendment. I think, you know, the realities that we are dealing with, with the existing contaminants that are going into our water lines, I think it's important, certainly. It's happened in the past, it'll happen again. And I think every effort that we can make to ensure that the proper regulatory agencies in between Guam EPA and GWA, that they're keeping track and they're doing regular testing, and more importantly, providing that information so that the public knows what these levels are in their water system, I think it's very important. And also, more important, that, you're right, it shouldn't be something that they should be hearing about in the news, it should be something that they should be directly notified and aware of, so that also, you know, the questions can be asked of exactly what steps is the Guam Water Works Authority taking? You know, are these filters in place? Obviously, we know that they're intending with the bond financing that was authorized here to be able to go and acquire what they need to put these filtration systems in at these particular areas, of course, of where we're already starting to see these higher levels. Hopefully, they're able to properly filtrate it. Hopefully, as one of my colleagues brought it before, is what do they do with it? How are they going to dispose of these filtration systems once the contaminants have been collected? Hopefully, they're able to collect all the contaminants that would be required to ensure safe drinking water. So certainly, this to me is a reasonable amendment that's been put forth, that I think is in the best interest of awareness for the public and ensuring accountability with regards to the test results. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment on this amendment, and I certainly do support it.
Sisus Masim, Senator, on the amendment, Senator Fisher, did you have your hand up on the amendment? No? All right, so on the amendment, anyone else would like to speak on the amendment? If not, the sponsor may close on the amendment. Senator Barnett, I'm sorry, Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sisus Masim, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to take the opportunity to rise in support of the amendment. Again, like all of the amendments that have been proffered today, although none of them have passed, I think this is a good amendment, I think it's reasonable, I don't see why we wouldn't want to notice and report nitrate testing results to all the stakeholders of our public water system, ma'am. Sisus Masim.
Sisus Masim, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, then sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think it's important that our community is aware of what's in our drinking water, and if it's unsafe, that they can take matters into their own hand. And I think this is really part of the responsibility of government, is to ensure that we are communicating to our community of how we're managing this water, which includes the testing results of nitrates. So I kindly ask for my colleagues' support on this amendment. Sisus Masim.
Sisus Masim, on the amendment, is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Roll call. Roll call. I heard one roll call. Two roll calls, three roll calls. Clerk, please take roll call on this vote on the amendment.
Senator Barnett. Senator Barnett, aye. Senator Brown. Senator Brown, aye. Senator Duñez. Senator Duñez, nay. Senator Fisher. Senator Fisher, nay. Senator Lujan, aye. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, nay. Senator Parkinson. Senator Parkinson, nay. Senator Perez. Senator Perez, aye.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, if I may, on a motion to excuse Senators not present. There's a motion to excuse Senators not present. If there's an objection, all in favor, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four, five.
Senator Tai Tui. Speaker Turlahi.
Madam Speaker, I rise to a point of inquiry.
Please state your point of inquiry.
First of all, good afternoon, so happy to be here today. My point of inquiry is, what are the rules relative to the calling of the votes in a situation like this, where we have members who are not present and they're called on for their vote? Could you please just clarify what the rules state?
Sure. The rules say that if members are not excused from voting, then they are required, they shall be required to vote. And if any member fails to vote for a period of over two minutes, or passes or refuses to vote for more than three consecutive times after the member's name is called, the member shall be construed as declining to vote. And the member's vote shall be entered And the member's vote shall be entered as a nay vote by the clerk of the legislature, unless the member is excused from voting pursuant to Section 1.02G6. If any member refuses to vote after being ordered to by the body, that member's vote shall be entered as a nay vote by the clerk of the legislature.
Thank you for that, ma'am. I just struggle to understand all of the complaining that was done about getting this bill on the floor, and here we have arrived at that moment, and there's nobody here.
There's no further debate during, we're voting now.
Sorry, thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Senator Canata. Senator Canata, nay. Senator San Augustine. Senator San Augustine, nay. Senator San Nicholas. Senator San Nicholas, nay. Senator Shelton. Senator Shelton, aye.
The vote on the floor amendment, by roll call, is seven ayes and eight nays. The amendment fails. Senator Perez, you have it.
Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker, the next amendment I'd like to proffer is on lines 3 to 26, page 15, to amend Section 48129 of the bill to read sewage disposal assistance and the NGLA study fund. So what this amendment does, well, I'll just read the whole amendment and the parts that are added in our underline, double underline. There is established a non-lapsing fund hereafter referred to as a sewage disposal assistance and NGLA study fund, which shall be maintained separate and apart from any other funds of the government of Guam and are not subject to the transfer authority of M. Maga Hagan Guahan and shall be administered by the Administrator of the Guam Environmental Protection Agency. The Administrator shall submit to the Guam Environmental Protection Board of Directors a quarterly report, which shall include how such funds are being used in the implementation of this chapter. Independent records and accounts shall be maintained in connection therewith. All fees, reimbursements, assessments, fines, and other funds collected or received pursuant to this chapter shall be deposited into this fund. The Administrator shall make every effort to apply for grants to provide financial assistance to increase access to compliant sewage disposal systems or sewer connections. Furthermore, the Administrator shall make every effort to apply for grants to fund a comprehensive study of the northern Guam lens aquifer relative to evaluating nitrate levels in the NGLA, evaluating the levels of other contaminants as determined by Guam PA, the impacts of such levels upon the aquifer, and for the purposes of revising minimum lot size for septic system density allowable within the groundwater protection zone pursuant to 10 GCA Section 47108.1. Monies in the fund shall be used for the following purposes: administration and implementation of this chapter, including but not limited to purchase of equipment, payment of personnel, cost, public outreach, training, and contracts; provision of grants for sewage disposal systems or sewer connection for eligible applicants; provision of grants to fund a study for the NGLA relative to evaluating its nitrate levels, the levels of other contaminants as determined by Guam PA, the impacts of such levels upon the aquifer, and for the purposes of revising minimum lot sizes for septic system density allowable within the Guam water protection zone pursuant to 10 GCA Section 47108.1. All monies of the sewage disposal assistance and the NGLA study fund are hereby appropriated and shall continue to be deemed appropriated to the Guam Environmental Protection Agency to be expended in accordance with this chapter, and to allow legal and clerks to make technical corrections and renumber. So the purpose of this amendment is to ensure that we are up to date, basically to allow for, to fund an NGLA study, to continually monitor it, and to look at if any effects of increase in density is having impacts on the aquifer. And I think this is something that's already done, but really by weary, but this would then support those efforts to continually monitor such a precious resource. So I ask for my colleagues' support.
On the amendment, is there anyone who'd like to speak on the amendment? Senator Brown, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the amendment. I think it's even more critically important, as we know, the information that we're aware of, that we be able to continue to strengthen and increase the amount of study we're doing in northern Guam. I think this particular bill has brought to light also the challenges, obviously, that we're already currently facing as a community with regards to ensuring safe drinking water and the quality and healthy viability of our waterlands. So I certainly rise in support. I think putting the funds aside and allowing these additional studies to move forward would be a very good thing, because at this point, we obviously are going to need to keep track of the amount of nitrates and other contaminants that are already currently going into our waterlands. I think that's a good thing we need to do. I mean, we want to talk about a healthy environment, we want to talk about a healthy community. We certainly have to ensure that we have safe drinking water to do that, and this will be a mechanism to help facilitate that and get that information studied, collected, and get that available so that we can keep track of the contaminants we have in our system and what's already contributing to future and continued contaminants within our northern Guam waterlands. So I definitely rise in support, Madam Speaker, of this amendment. Thank you.
Ms. Massey, on the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? If not, sponsor may close on the amendment.
Do you guys want to talk? Just one quick recess, Madam Speaker.
One minute recess. We're back from recess. Senator Perez, or sorry, on the amendment, Senator San Nicholas, you're recognized.
No good deed goes unpunished. I support this amendment. I know earlier I said I wouldn't support anything, but Hafat Tal tells us, Senator Sabina, she knows my objections to all these amendments, but she turned to me and she treated me like a person. She asked me for my support, and I asked her, I said, "Did any of your amendments come, go through?" She says, "No." But, you know, what we're forgetting here is there's somebody who's valiantly fighting for the environment, but we want to do other things. And I didn't want to let this pass without mentioning that valiant effort to save the environment and our water. So I'm going to have to retract some of my statements earlier that I wouldn't support an amendment. But I think, in all fairness, you know, her fight is very valiant, and I thank her for that, despite all the overwhelming odds. And so I'm going to give her this amendment, and I support this amendment. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Senator Duenas, you're recognized.
Ms. Massey, Madam Speaker, and since we're on this part of the bill, which is actually one of the best parts of the bill, along with most of the really good stuff that's in here. We have complained for so long that, you know, EPA is 100% fully funded, how come we never make our effort, you know, to do something to help them? So in my conversations with the mover of the amendment, the truth is now that we have this, nothing prevents us from doing a general fund appropriation. That's a great part of what this bill is going to do and take care of. We actually have a fund now that's co-mingled with nothing that we can make now. Budget's coming up. Let's... that we can make now. Budget's coming up. Let's show our support. But the thing is, Madam Speaker, is if this fund is funded properly for many different purposes, there's nothing that you don't have to mandate that EPA does the study. It could just, that's what we're going to do this year. We're going to include that as part of this fund that's been established. Could do it by board resolution. So whether this amendment passes or not, I don't think that this takes away from the ability for EPA to make this decision to include this as part of their study. Once again, when the title of the bill is read, this is one of the key components. This fund can even assist hooking up to sewer. This fund can do a whole bunch of stuff, but the fact that it's not co-mingled, it's not transferable, you can't touch it except for EPA's decisions, well, let's see this budget season. I may go ahead and just talk to the chairman and put in what my wish list is for appropriation for EPA. So the disposition of this amendment, I think, one way or the other, now that we have this fund, a great part of this bill, this fund being established, EPA can do board resolution and say, "You know what? That's a good idea."
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Sisus Massey, on the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Senator Taitui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And Madam Speaker, like all the amendments that the author of this amendment has been proffering, are all about protecting our water and our people, not just this amendment. There were really important amendments prior to this that was voted against, that didn't get passed. But I'm happy to see, or maybe I'm hearing, people making phone calls, that they're worried too about this bill, especially when the amendments are not getting through. I like this amendment because it also encourages EPA to seek federal funding as well, and that federal funding directly for this cause, both on the sewer disposal assistance as well as the NGLA study fund. So again, I applaud the senator who made this amendment, who has done nothing but proffer amendments for the safety and well-being of our public and our drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Certainly rise in support of the amendment. I think it's another great offering. And I'm also encouraged by some of the retiring speakers, what appears to be a willingness to collaborate a little bit more. And if we pass this amendment, or even if we don't, I think that I might motion for some reconsideration of the previous amendments that didn't pass, Madam Speaker. So rise in full support of this amendment and encourage the body to do the same. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, on the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the amendment? Senator Sanogstein, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, as I read this amendment, I don't like to talk about what happened before or what's upcoming, because there's quite a few amendments. But in reference to doing a study, hopefully, I believe in my studio, in situacion, and I hope it moves forward positively. Not just, "We're going to do a study, and then we're going to do another study, and then we're going to do another study, and then nothing happens." I really hope, because like I said earlier, I'm from the north. I live in the north. None of you other colleagues over here live north, okay? Never mind about families, because I've got plenty of family up north too and plenty down south. But my point is, I'm concerned about the aquifer, and I've preached that for quite a few years already. And with that, I will support this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment? If not, then sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm really encouraged about the collegiality in this body and all the positive support for this amendment. And I look forward to continued support as we vote on it. And I think it's really about, you know, protecting what's so valuable to us is our drinking water. You know, we take it for granted, but once we damage it, it's not going to be there for us. And so we need to reciprocate in the spirit of an afamalek to our environment. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, on the amendment, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, this amendment passes. Senator Perez, you're still recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to make the motion to reconsider the previous amendment that had to do with reporting of nitrates to be posted on the websites of GWA in Guam, PA, and that our community can also take action if it exceeds unsafe levels.
There's a motion to reconsider this amendment. Is there any objection to reconsidering? There's an objection. All in favor of reconsidering the amendment? Please raise your hand. Motion passes, so we will reconsider the amendment. Can you, this is the amendment, line 20, page 16, section 481, reporting of nitrate testing results. On this amendment, is there any discussion? If not, Senator Perez.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. So again, you know, this is really about the community's right to know what's in their drinking water. I mean, this is practiced already, but, you know, with our concern about nitrates increasing, we want to make sure that our community is protected and they take action when necessary. There are treatment methods that can treat nitrate, and, you know, if their water levels go above the five milligrams per liter, which is what action, the enforcement action, that level that is needed, that GWA needs to take action at, that the community can also ensure their drinking water is safe. I mean, when I think about the past, how, you know, what was in our drinking water and we did not know what was there could potentially harm us and could potentially lead to cancers. And so if we can avoid that, if we can protect our families within our own homes, ensure that the water that they are receiving is safe, because water is invaluable to life. We need it every day for drinking, you know, when we cook our food, and, you know, all our activities require this. And so just this simple thing of reporting, letting the community know to ensure that their water is safe, and I ask for my colleagues' support.
On the amendment, Senator Taitui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, this also gives the opportunity for families living in that area, like my good friend from Jigo has mentioned, he lives in that area, and that's where a lot of high-concentrated nitrates are. But if it's reported on the website, I mean, this gives the ability of these families to look on the website, to see where are you at as far as nitrates are concerned and how it's rising, or if it's being stagnant. I don't know about you, but I know that some families have incorporated water purifiers at their homes, both when they shower and they're drinking. They have filtration systems just to be safe. And this gives the opportunity for those families to decide, "Hey, you know what? I know going up to five MGL is very dangerous and mitigation has to be done, but, you know, even if it goes up to three or four, are you going to wait? Is that family going to wait till it reaches five before something is done to mitigate it?" Well, this gives an opportunity to those families to decide on putting a purifier, water purifier, or filtration system in their home. And that's all this amendment does. It just gives the public the ability to see where they are at in their area as far as nitrates are concerned. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Barnett, you're recognized, or Senator Blas, sorry, Senator Barnett.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I hope our colleagues look at this amendment with new eyes, open eyes. It's very easy to support. We're talking about testing and reporting, and I really care about my colleagues that live up north, whether it's Jigo, Dedito, I got, you know, my young guns, my kids are up north in Jigo too. So as we look at the increasing issues with nitrates in the water, I think that our people, as always, have a right to know. And I commend the author of the amendment, just really for, there's been a lot of great discussion on this bill. And I think specifically with a lot of the comments on these amendments, we're really starting to see the experience and the knowledge that some of our members have about our water quality and the history of the aquifer and the history of development on our island. So I've really learned quite a bit today, ma'am. And so I am hopeful that this amendment will pass, and also would implore the proffer of this amendment to revisit the other failed amendments so that we can, really in the best interest of the people of Guam and the environment of our island, turn out a bill that's a good compromise. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey, on the amendment, Senator, on the amendment, anyone else like to speak on the amendment? Senator Sanogstein?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, it's just amazing, huh, that we need a bill, 175, to bring up the issue what unfortunately GWA and Guam Environmental Protection Agency has failed to do for many years. We all have to admit that because we have an amendment to tell them to report it, to tell the people of Guam where the nitrate testing results. It's just sad that we have to do an amendment to a bill to get them to do what they shouldn't be doing. And I'll give you a good example, as we want to talk about up north. I know, Speaker, you remember back then when we all agreed, "Let's give them the property next to Globo, give them so they can build their office," where it used to be a dump site in Dedito. And then what did they find? It's totally polluted. In a five-acre lot, they have over 160,000 tires. Right next door, there's a property controlled by Tomorrowland Trust that's called Globo Industry. Nothing about them is a good cause, is a good service, because we have to dump our goods. But is anybody monitoring that area? Do we have an aquifer in that area? I mean, I don't know. But it amazes me, but I'm happy, and I support this. I'm just hoping GWA can now, not only through this bill, but start exercising, start reporting where our nitrate testing results are, and EPA, put for vote, estimay naan Guam Environmental Protection Agency. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I do support this amendment.
Thank you, Senator Sanogstein. On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on it? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, and I thank, express my thanks to my colleagues for their support in making sure that we're prioritizing what's so important to us, which is our people, our water, and our environment. Sisus Massey.
On the amendment, this is reconsideration of this amendment, section 481, line 20, page 16. Is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor? Please raise your hand. 10. Motion carries. Amendment passes. Senator Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next amendment I'd like to proffer is on line 3 to 12, page 12, to amend section 48, 127B of section 12 of the bill to read. And so what it really does, it actually corrects one word in this on subsection B2. On B2, it states, "Any person, firm, or corporation in violation of a detailed statement or the approved construction documents they're under." And then it goes on to say, so basically, the "of" became an "or" because it didn't make sense. I think there was a technical problem with that one, but just to make sure that it's captured. Yeah, basically, if you, I think it's probably self-explanatory that a notice of violation would be served for any person who violates their detailed statement or an approved construction document. You know, of course, before any type of septic system is put in place, there has to be some approval of the construction of these systems. And it just, basically, just corrects that particular word. And to ensure, basically, what the impact is, is that assure that a person or firm is abiding by the approved construction document. And I hope to have my colleagues' support on this amendment.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, lines 3 to 12, page 12, is there an objection to the amendment? Seeing no objection, this amendment passes. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next amendment I'd like to proffer is line, page 12 to 27, page 5, line 1 to 2, page 6. And so this is section 6 of the bill. And so I guess, I think some of the language here was already in the statute, but it ended up being underlined. So I think it's more of a formatting.
I'm sorry, Senator Perez, just a minute. We don't have a copy of that.
Oh, okay.
We'll take a one-minute recess for copies.
We're back from recess. I apologize, colleagues, for the delay. Part of it is because the amendment was to a subsection C on Section 6 of the bill, but the subsection C in the bill needs to be corrected by legal. It doesn't reflect the statute as it is today. So she's doing that, and then the amendment will be made to the corrected version. In the interim, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So if I could just set that aside for now while legal is making the corrections and for the amendments to be passed out, I would like to make a motion to reconsider.
Sure. Motion to reconsider which?
The one on the line one, page 16, to add a new section to the bill. To read "section a new section" is added to Chapter 48, 10 GCA, "A moratorium on the new septic systems of water quality after two confirmatory tests." So that one.
All right. Okay. There's a motion to reconsider the actions of the body on this amendment. On the motion to reconsider, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, we will reconsider. So on the amendment itself, Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So what this amendment does is to ensure that if there's an increase in nitrate levels in a water well, so if there's any permitting that is requested to be within the wellhead protection zone, that there'll be a moratorium on permits near that water well. And so, as you know, we already have a problem in some of our wells which are increasing, and they're expected to increase to half MCL, which at that level, GWA has to take corrective action. And so what that means is that, you know, in order to help GWA, so what GWA is doing currently is they have to spend millions of dollars to hook up these high-density areas onto sewer. And so we're talking tens of millions of dollars. And so this is a more cost-effective measure to address any rising levels of nitrate. So instead of exacerbating a problem, what this would do would help the situation by not increasing the amount of septic systems within an area where we're drawing water from. from. Like I said, in the states, you go, you come across these water, these conservation areas where it's fenced off. So these areas are fenced off because this is where the community gets their water from. And so they want to make sure that that water is safe, you know, that it's protected, and to ensure that the water is safe to drink. And I think this falls in the similar, follows that similar fashion where, you know, we can't cordon off the whole northern Guam. You know, that's not practical. But what's practical is if we can protect at least 1,000 feet from where we draw our water from. And so, you know, as you know, you know, especially certain areas within our northern aquifer are especially productive, especially important where we get most of our drinking water from. And so it's critical that we make sure that this area, just like in the states, they protect those areas which water comes from. I think it's important that we follow that same, you know, best practices about protecting water because, you know, why wait till it's contaminated when we can at least prevent it from, prevent it from being contaminated? You know, we just passed the bill last turn, last session that we allowed GWA to borrow hundred, about 516 million dollars. And that's just to address the current situation today. And so the proposed increases in rates is going to be 50%. And so we want to make sure that, you know, I think this is a proactive measure that can protect the water, protect our ratepayers, protect everybody living on Guam. And it's a proactive measure. And I ask for my colleagues' support on this. Sidoos Massey.
Sidoos Massey, Senator. On the amendment, Senator Duane, yes, you're recognized.
Sidoos Massey, Madam Speaker. Thank you for the proffering of the amendment and the debate that's going on. And at this time, Madam Speaker, I move to call the previous question, which will end debate.
There's a call for the previous question. On that requires eight votes. All in favor of calling the previous question, which would end all debate on this amendment? Please raise your hand. Motion carries.
Madam Speaker, at this time, I move to call the question on all debate on the bill. Move it to the third reading, please.
I'm sorry, sir. We did the call of the questions, so now the sponsor closes on her amendment.
Roger that. That will end debate after that, right? That's, that's closing on the amendment. That's the rules.
To close on her, she's allowed to close on her amendment. Senator Perez, if you'd like to close on your amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I think it's unfortunate, you know, this body actually allowed for the reconsideration, but only to, you know, abruptly call the question. And so I think, you know, it's really in bad faith. We're trying to ensure this legislation has all the protective measures. You know, there are concerns with increased density and, you know, serious concerns about the protection of our aquifer, which has, which is the foundation of the health of our people. And so I find it really disingenuous that this body is looking the other way when it comes to these proactive measures, best practices, to ensure that we are not polluting this drinking, this sole-source aquifer. Something that we apparently, by my colleagues, are taking for granted. They're taking for granted the water that we drink, that we showered in this morning, that we're probably going to shower today because it's so hot in this, in this hall. I mean, imagine if water, you could, you turn on the tap and no water came out because they had to shut down the wells, because water wasn't safe to provide to their, their community. I mean, that's, I know that's an extreme scenario, but if we keep ignoring science, if we keep ignoring best practices, if we close and shut our eyes to what is valuable, you know, that it could end up in those situations. We're ignoring the fact that worldwide, water, access to clean drinking water is a struggle. And we should never, ever negotiate that on behalf of our people, on behalf of our health, on behalf of our environment, on behalf of the most vulnerable of our population, our youth, our menomko. So can we look them in the eye and say, yes, I voted for this? I voted, I didn't vote for this because I didn't care enough. I didn't care enough for your health. I didn't care enough that you have cancer today because the levels of nitrates in your water is going to cause ill health effects. I didn't care enough that your baby got blue baby syndrome. Is that what this body wants to project? That our health, that our water, our clean drinking water, our sole-source aquifer is negotiable? The health of our people is negotiable? Why? Why are we in a rush to negotiate this, which should be non-negotiable? It really is a common sense measure. And, you know, unfortunately, we were going through a very collaborative spirit here. You know, our people deserve better. They want us to work together. And I felt heartened that we were getting to that point, that we can protect the environment and support our people. But for some reason, for some reason, that, those two were not, we could not get to this point for our people. Our people need us. They need us to work together on this. You know, I find it really odd that we are spending millions of dollars on a hospital, tens of millions of dollars on a hospital. We think that's going to solve the problem? Why wait till it gets to that point where people are going into hospitals because they're sick from the water that they're drinking? When we can prevent the illness by ensuring our water is safe to drink? No money can buy you health. Steve Jobs even said that, the late Steve Jobs, who succumbed from pancreatic cancer. He said, you know, the, the former CEO of Apple. He said, "I can, I can pay every physician out there a million dollars, but what I cannot buy is my health." And by looking the other way on this amendment, I mean, we're looking away from our people, the people that put us in this position to look after their interest, everybody's interest here on Guam. Young, old, rich, poor, land or landless. Water is essential to all life. It's essential to our humanity. It's part of our human right. And this call of the question is really in bad faith. It's in bad faith to the people of Guam. Shutting down debate. I mean, this bill was put out of committee because they wanted debate. But now they want to shut down debate because they don't want to listen to facts, they don't want to listen to science, they don't want to listen to concerns of many in our community. You know, there was a poll taken on the post. The poll was, what do you support, environment or development? Two-thirds of our population voted for the environment, according to the poll. Are we turning back our backs on those people, on our people? And if nitrates are normal, then that would give us some comfort that what we're drinking is safe, that we, as a body, pass policies to ensure the safety of our people in their own homes. You know, I think this, this would be a win-win situation for everybody. Why are we turning our backs now? No amount of money can turn back time, can turn back progression of disease. Yeah, we all know somebody in our families that have suffered from cancer. In fact, my father died almost a year ago due to cancer. And it's, it's in his memory, and the memory of all those have suffered from illnesses. And to prevent others from getting these illnesses, this is why this, this is important to me. This is important to you, the people of Guam, that we protect something so invaluable to our lives. Many people from other countries would, would love to have the situation that we have, to have this valuable, abundant water resource where they do not have to walk miles to get. Water is, is very heavy, and to have it being piped into their homes is really a luxury for most of the world, most of the people living in this world today. And here we are, taking it for granted. And I say, next time you turn on that tap, you know, you have to think, you know, is this water safe? You know, should this bill pass? Will it be safe for our people? And it's not just years from now, it's five years. I mean, we talk, you know, if we impact our, I mean, this is the issue with some of this environmental, environmental concerns, is that many people think, oh, it's not going to happen in my lifetime, you know, if I pass this policy, it's not going to affect me today or affect me while I'm in office. You'll be long gone when the impacts occur, but that is not true. By 2029, or actually even sooner, there was some wells that were experiencing over half the MCL. It could be in our recent lifetime that this happens. And the burden we're putting on the next generation, because developing babies, developing our youth that are still developing, the pollutants that we put into this aquifer affects their development and makes it harder for us to overcome. Sidoos Massey.
Sidoos Massey, Senator. On that amendment? It reads, "Moratorium on New Septic Systems," on the amendment. Is there an objection? There's an objection. All in favor, please raise your hand. Seventh amendment fails. Senator Perez?
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. So that this amendment that we were waiting for was actually to correct what was in the substitute bill.
Madam Chair?
There was actually an error.
Point of order. Called the previous question, there is, we ended debate on her closing on the last amendment.
We did, we did end the debate on the amendment. She's, she still has the floor, Senator Perez.
Madam Speaker, I call the question at this point in time.
Have the floor, Senator. The Paris has the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The next amendment that I proffer is, actually cleans up the substitute bill, which didn't quite, was not to form. And so it does, does correct the mistakes in the substitute bill in addition to adding some changes to it. So what this bill, what this amendment does, it reads to how, it should say, amend the bill, to read as follows. And so what, what's changed in this is the part where, so I'll just read it all, and I'll together. It's subsection C, "Where water is available from a public water system as defined by 10 GCA, Section 5, 3102, but a public sewer is not available, toilet facilities shall be of type two or four pursuant to regulations promulgated by Guam PA. This subsection shall apply to all buildings constructed after the effective date of this act. With respect to buildings in existence on the effective date of this act, this subsection shall apply to all such buildings except dwellings from and after six months after the promulgation of rules and regulations by Guam PA or after..." Wait, is this the right one? So I believe this is incorrect, but... Yeah, I'll just read it, what it should say. It says, "With respect to buildings in existence on the effective date of this act, this subsection shall apply to all such buildings except dwellings from, dwellings from and after six months after the promulgation of rules and regulations by Guam PA or after water becomes available, whichever is..." It should say sooner. It says later in the law, but I'm amending it to sooner. And that's what the amendment should have said. "And this subsection shall apply to dwellings from and after one year after promulgation of rules and regulations by Guam PA or after water becomes available, whichever is..." And it says in the law, "later," but I'm, I'm changing it to sooner.
Senator Perez, sorry. All right, so there's a document passed out that does not have a senator proposing amendment. That document is Legal's Correction of Subsection C in the bill. It, it did not reflect the code accurately. So this is for all of your information. It reflects the code accurately with the, the amendments intended in the bill. And yours is SFP.
Okay, got it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you for that. I was reading the, the reference. So yeah, so the amendment reads on line 12 to 27, one, two, one and two, page five and six. It's amend Section 6 of the bill to read, "Where water is available from a public water system as defined by 10 GCA." So I'm not going to read it all, but the, the changes really are switching later to sooner in two instances on that first paragraph. So I'll just read that part where it's changed. So, so this subsection shall apply to all such buildings except dwellings from, from and after six months after the promulgation of rules and regulations by Guam EPA or after water becomes available, whichever is sooner. And this subsection shall apply to dwellings from and after one year after the promulgation of rules and regulations by Guam PA or after water becomes available, whichever is sooner. This subsection shall not apply to any such existing building where the size of the lot or the soil permeability of the lot, as may be determined by the administrator, is inadequate and unsuitable for installation and operation of toilet facilities of type two, and this is where I added, or type four. And so those are the changes, and to allow legal and the clerks to make technical corrections. So in addition to correcting what's in the subbill, basically what I wanted to ensure that, you know, once you're available, once sewer is available, that, or whichever sooner the regulations, that, that action be taken to ensure there's less nitrates, other contaminants that could be leaching out into the groundwater protection zone. It also adds type four. So, you know, that, that was the whole point of this bill is to, a big point of this bill was to include type four nitrate-reducing systems into the whole toilet facilities law. And this is just basically aligned with that. So yeah, again, it's really just tightening up the law and making it harmonize with everything else in the bill. I ask for my colleagues' support on this.
Sidoos Massey, Senator Perez. We're now recess until 2:00 PM tomorrow.